Okay, good evening everybody. It is six oh one P M on Wednesday, December eleventh. We are officially calling this meeting into order. We're gonna start as we always do with the pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice- Uh, now please pause for a moment as we think about those who have gone before us. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, I didn't put this in the agenda or uh in our documents, but I did want to uh congratulate uh our village clerk, uh Olivia, on the birth of. Am I saying?
A new boy.
A new boy. So uh whoops. So she uh she won't be here for a little bit. Our deputy clerk Judy Vandecar is subbing in. So thank you Judy. Judy, do you mind you to roll a call please?
Sure. Mayor Allen?
I am present.
Attorney Elena?
I'm present.
Deputy Robert Ryan?
I am here.
Trustee Brett Hanselman?
Here.
Trustee Megan Walbeath?
Here.
Trustee Doug Sauer?
Here.
Um, Deb isn't here right now. Alter?
I would expect her to be here shortly, yeah.
And trustee Ian Shudding is absent.
Yes, and also present with us is uh somewhere back there is our environmental attorney Dave Engel. Uh, all right. Okay, uh just uh one brief announcement that's on the agenda. We're gonna keep putting the election information up in our agendas just so everyone knows. But as we mentioned last meeting, the election is Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Winners of this election would start their terms on April first. Um, there's the mayor seat that will be up for two year term, three trustee seats. This is unrelated to if people are running reelected, running for reelection or not. Um, for those interested, the first day that you can get your independent uh naming petitions to start gathering signatures is, I run it up now twelve thirty one twenty four. And I think those will be available in the village office. Um, the first day to file them with the office with all the proper signatures is February fourth. And the last day you can file them is February eleventh. It's all based on NICOM dates.
So who who's up? You?
Uh, obviously mine is mayor.
Me.
I think it's you?
I am.
Those.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's me.
All what I'll do is I'll I'll put in the there, I'll put in the last name so we know which seats are up.
Cause your yours uh one year for Bobby Denver.
Yeah, and you're just finishing your first year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, which means Dan, so so Dan and Deb.
Me, Dan.
Dan, Deb and and Brett are.
Okay, all right, yes. So those will be the seats who are up. Uh, all right, a whole slew of updates. I'm continuing to kind of address um um project updates within the mayor updates. So I had a call with uh Honeywell uh and Sasha uh who's overseeing the project. I want to pass on a couple uh updates regarding the alternate water source. Um, they have done their substantial contra uh construction completion back in mid-November. There are some plans to do a few updates in the spring, specifically some ballards, some trees along the property line. The village has brought up uh getting a storage shed in there for some of the uh lawn and the snow equipment. They've said okay to that and they're gonna be doing that in early s- uh in the springtime. Once the weather changes. Hello, thank you so much. Um, so that stuff is coming. Um, so far system wise, everything is working and coming properly. The part five sampling and the GAC sampling, which is all required for the new water source, uh the samples have already been collected since. They're hoping that they're gonna have those back next week. They're hoping and planning to give the engineer certificate of completion to D O H for review in early January with the sample results. Um, and they're looking to figure, let me see here. Village should be getting the um manuals and the as-built drawings in mid-January. Um, I know Jim and Josh uh have already had some training on some of that. Um, they're looking to start to schedule kind of the dedication of of uh the location and the um infrastructure equipment over to the village in mid to late January. With our eye on late January or early February as the time when we will officially be turning on our new water source. Um, and again, the new water source will be those two wells primarily functioning together. And then well seven, which is our current well, will become our backup well that we can turn off as needed when the situation arises. So that is our update there. Dave, anything you wanted to add to that or that kind of covered it?
I think that covers it.
Great. Uh, the second item is the three M settlement money, which we've talked about in the past. We were notified that there is going to be a delay. We had been told for many months that we'd be getting them by the end of like sometime in December. Um, the email read, as discussed, we recently informed that the settlement administrator requires additional time to perform quality assurance, quality control related to the phase one settlement claims. This means the first payment that was expected by the end of this calendar year will be delayed. We're being told um the settlement administrator will complete and send notice of the final allocation amounts around the end of January or beginning of February. Therefore, it's likely we may not receive settlement funds before April uh of next year. And uh they'll advise if there's any other changes. Additionally, because the three M settlement schedule anticipated the first installment of three equal yearly payments to be paid this year, they're anticipating that twenty twenty five will have two payments. The initial one we were supposed to get, which will be coming late, probably around April, and then the normal one that we were expecting, which will probably be end of summer or early fall. Dave cover, is that fine? Anything you wanna add?
Uh, yeah, I I wouldn't make too much of a of a delay. It's become apparent that part of the problem was that some of the claimants simply did not do a good job in filling out the various forms that were required here. I was in touch with Michael Stagg down in New Orleans who's firm as the lead on this on a nationwide basis today, and he assured us that Krusik's situation was was good to go. But without getting into too much details here, you know, there's this huge pot of money and, you know, it's gotta be divvied up. And they wanna make sure that it's divvied up correctly. And there are those who obviously have, there are people who or communities have legitimate claims for whom the paperwork wasn't properly done. They wanna make sure it was inadvertently disqualified.
Yeah. So it's not really a question of 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 if, it just it's more of a when thing. Um, unfortunately, it's later than we had all hoped, so we're gonna kind of have to sit and and wait a little bit instead of acting on what we had hoped to, we'd already start planning on. But you know, there's there's always the possibility if we wanted to do it um a revenue anticipation note, because we know we have documents that say that this money's gonna be coming. So that may be an avenue to pursue if we feel like we need to. And just as a reminder, I should have said this first. This settlement money is related to uh an A triple F national settlement. This is separate from our local situation with St. Combing and Honeywell, of which there's more coming, so. Trustee's good? All right, uh next item, um website development, if I can find my mouse. There it is. Um, I had another good conversation with Jeremy who's working on our new website and I have some new stuff to show off. This is some more uh sample looks to what our website could be, uh the new website. Um, this is pretty much what we had seen last time except notices, which would be a separate category that we put up. Will be on the right. I'd like to see it look up probably a little bit bigger and have a little bit of text. So maybe instead of having five notices, three, but that's kind of like little minutious stuff that we can do. So this is kind of the look of the homepage. Um, there will be abilities to set custom notices, general row. This is all stuff we talked about last time. If there's a special notice we wanna put up. And when those are activated, they'll show up on the top of the site right here and the stuff over here and here will simply just slide down a little bit. Um, now the, he has a couple demos of this, hey, um but he wanted to work on a background where if you can see right here, things shift from the beautiful picture to kind of a a a blank space so that you can see content. You're gonna see a bunch of examples of this here. Um, that's kind of his idea for what the footer is gonna look like, which I think is fantastic. Uh, this is how that cutoff would look when you start to get into some of the the specific pages outside the homepage. This is one example of how the village board page could look, where we have the content on the left center and the the links on the right. And he's got everything set up really nicely, so you can just see the pictures of people, get emails, know what their roles are, which is fantastic and it looks beautiful. He has the same content with the links on the left and then the the content shifted to the middle and right. So he's got a lot of possibilities there. I'm just gonna keep scrolling for a minute cause we have a few more to go through. Um, this is how it would look on the history page, which I think is gorgeous. Um, and again, he's taking a lot of content that's already on the page and just freshening it up and making it look really, really sharp here. Um, this is basically a lot of what we have already on our webpage, but man, does it look just just fantastic.
That's on our webpage, you'd never know.
I know, cause you're not quite sure where it is or you know, how else we gotta review it. Um, this is an example of how, say, the laws, regulations and code could look. Where you have the name of the law over here, you have a quick description and you click, you know, link to access it. I did share with him that we Deb have categorized all of our laws into about eight or nine categories, so I'd like to add a component where you can click on the specific category and we'll show it. So that's coming. Um, do 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 do, just kind of showing some of the ones here. And then just another kind of look on how various things could look. So at this point, uh then an events calendar when we get a calendar here and some community partners there. So at this point with this, um if you guys are good with the general look on this, then we're gonna start building some pages, reviewing the pages. I'm gonna try to schedule some time uh as he sends me pages, we'll take a look. If anyone else wants to be included in those pages, just tell me uh and I'll make sure that happens. Uh, so Deb does. Megan, do you want to?
Sure.
Anybody else wanna also be getting these pages as they're populated? It's fine if you just wanna leave it to us and we'll review it, that's fine. Um, and what we're targeting is February one, making the switch over.
Okay.
So now that I'm gonna give him the green light on everything is looking good. Now it starts to populate pages. Now it's loading up the content. Any thoughts, questions, comments on anything?
Uh, front was there on the on the homepage, is there a quick list of all meetings?
Um.
Uh, you have to kind of look. I think it'd be good to say all of the board meetings, only more meetings in one spot up there.
Yeah. Uh, yes. Uh, in the dropdown, we'll have options, but I think your point is well made. We should have a meetings link over there on the left. That's a really sharp, yeah.
Can all meetings have to be posted on the right? All of the meetings have to be posted and so it should be easily accessible, yeah, just like there.
Yes. Yep, yep. So yeah, I'll add that in over here on the side there, so there's a a go-to spot for meetings. That's great. Any other questions, comments, thoughts on this? Uh, man, I'm so excited to see this website come out. It's gonna look so good. Okay, uh Village Who's Falls is hiring. Um, I of course left these on my computer at home, so I'll have these up online tomorrow. Code enforcement officer, part-time, D P W laborer, full-time, and we're adding to our treasurer department by hiring another treasurer. Um, and this is, these are all things basically adding to. Uh, we're looking to uh give more code enforcement support by hiring a part-time officer, a part-time code enforcement officer. Um, D P W laborer is to uh fill the the void for someone who's out for a little while doing um their their thing, serving. Um, and then um giving more support to our village office and our treasurer with all of the crazy stuff that you do on a daily basis. Or sometimes it fits into multiple days in one day. So I'll have that up on the website tomorrow morning. My apologies for not having the documents here. I have an update on the catania properties. All four properties along Classic Street, the three right along Classic Street and the one right behind it that the Greenway is on, have entered foreclosure lands.
Whoa.
So I actually got the heads up from Sergeant Hudson who saw them listed out in the foreclosed, the foreclosure documents that E- uh East of Press had. Then I went to the office and found these glorious envelopes here. So if you guys wanna take a look, that's fine. I did verify that the four parcels are exactly the four parcels that we're talking about. And I've already reached out to Mark, I forget how to pronounce his last name, Wojak, at Rensselaer County. Um, he um already knew by those that we were interested in those properties. He is going to spend a couple weeks tracking that down to what he has to do. Um, we're gonna circle back probably after the new year about how to pursue those. In the past, when we pursued properties that were in foreclosure through the county, it was through the Woodsbrook buyout program and it required both the village board and the Rensselaer County Legislature to approve a resolution that it didn't.
They did that on one fourteen Church Street, yeah.
Yes, yes, and it's not a big deal except, and you'll know more about this hopefully, there's a new law that came out recently that changed how properties can get passed from either entity to entity in that if there was back taxes owed, but the value of the property ended up being higher than the original owner may be entitled to some of those funds. But it's different from municipality to municipality, so there's a little bit of looking into it. But the good news is, because this is all in foreclosure, we now have an avenue where we can finally get a hold of these properties. And it this this could be months away, which is fantastic. Now, Dan had told me that, I forget who he had spoken with, who looked into this and found out that we had assumed the estate was actually linked to New York, uh New Jersey, but the estate is actually linked to New York. So there is finally something happening with this, which is really exciting. Uh, hopefully within a couple months, we'll be in uh discussions with the county on how to obtain this, so.
And and uh just along the, so looking at this, the amount of back taxes, is that what we're gonna be able to purchase the property at or?
In the past, um, the county has waived those for us, um, knowing that we were gonna, especially with the Woodsbrook buyout.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, we just basically got them for a dollar and then they didn't have to worry about things and we don't have to worry about things. I have a feeling it'll be similar, especially with the fact that the middle parcel has the undermined sidewalk that we're concerned is gonna start undermining Route twenty-two, which could lead to a significant uh issue there. God forbid if that part of the road collapsed in, how are you gonna re-move twenty-two through the through the the village while it's fixed, so? Uh, and again, state B O T has known about this and they're like, good luck, I'm sure it'll be fine. So that's been great, but this.
If if the village acquired the property?
Yes.
Then would we be able to, how would that work? Would Beestrow being able to?
It's ours.
Yeah, so we can get permission for that to happen, I think.
There's. There's there, it would basically be Beestrow and the village coming up with an agreement on how to use that land if there was something they wanted to do. Whereas the Woodsbrook property, we obtain those with funds related to uh a grant program from the state that limited what we could do. There isn't gonna be a limit here. So if we get them, they're ours and just like any other piece of land that we would own. If we wanted to come up with a shared agreement or something like that, that's what we pursue. So I was very happy to see that. So just make sure those go back on the on-ler's, but um I was, I just wanna show those to you, so that's very good news.
They are, yep, that's awesome.
Literally film that.
It's not, it's not a lot of money either.
Uh, no, it's not. It's not much, which is really nice.
No. Okay.
Um, good. So next thing, um, community service program.
That's huge.
This is something that we had for years, um, and then COVID happened and it kind of shut down. Jerry McAuliffe had been um the wonderful person who had taken this on, had worked with people when court was assigning community service. It's been um off for a while. Jerry is ready to start this up, which is exciting. Um, he's already spoken with the court, he's already spoken with Kenny, I think he's already spoken with um Sergeant Hudson as well, so we're full speed ahead on this. Um, I had hoped tonight to have some quick way to appoint this. Um, but when we looked into it and as we're trying to kind of shift things around and do things properly to civil service, we had two options. The first was entering an independent um con- contractor agreement between the village and him. The second would be, which is the way it used to be, although I don't know if it was done the right way, but it was as a village employee, as an appointed position. But again, that would have to be as related to civil service. Um, I, when I understood kind of the independent contractor agreement approach, I realized that it wouldn't be nearly as good as having him as an employee. Because then he would be a village employee, we would be insured. If anything would happen, it would be as as a village employee. Whereas if it's an independent contractor.
He has to get his own insurance. Is that correct?
That's that's the case, correct.
Yeah, and he, I mean, a concern of mine was just, I mean, it's community service, not that it's, not that, like, usually when community service is offered through the courts, it's not offered to like a violent offender. But you know, you could have people with mental health issues who are having a bad day, something would happen, he could get injured and then he doesn't, he's not, doesn't have the right to like worker's compensation or anything like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but he has like, he has a private corporation.
Yeah, he has his own company.
He has his own LLC.
It's not just a guy.
Yeah, you could do it with a firm and not do it with it.
But his his preference.
If he has insurance.
So it costs us more money, I presume, as an employee.
Yes, but it would also take the risk off of him, whereas if he did it as independent contractor, it it adds a lot more.
Maybe it's a, uh, I don't think, and you, to.
Well, we already have, he, so so I've spoken to him about this and we kind of had a draft uh sort of in contract um that we we could do just to start, sorry. Um, I spoke to civil service, there's no community service title or test for this. The closest thing they had were like community service, like events, community service type people, not like community service within a court. Um, so by, we would just go through the same avenue we have done previously. We'd get the job description and title to them for review. They have their civil service commission, they meet, they approve the the creation of position. And it wouldn't be competitive, it wouldn't be off of a test, so we could appoint and then that that would be how we would pursue this. This is the proper way to do this.
So so what's the cost in this budget year and where were you gonna get the money for it?
So it's gonna take a probably a couple months to do that, because the civil service commissioner only meets monthly. The last time we had to wait two months for them.
That's very small, I mean.
So um at the earliest, we would have something ready would probably be February. Um, so we we have time to figure out those questions. More of it, it's really gonna apply more to the recent fiscal year's budget. And the next budget, which will be kind of being discussed and put together around the same season. Um, so as we work to create this position, we are also gonna have to work to figure out where we're gonna budget it for this fiscal year. Um, for right now.
But are we making, are we, are we being estimated commitment to do it without knowing what the cost is?
No, not at this moment, no. This is like, we're pursuing this. We're not, we don't have to decide anything tonight. It's just kind of where where things are at right now.
Okay, we're not.
Denise, and do you know when, in the past, when?
In the past, it was twenty dollars an hour and it was a maximum of twenty hours a week.
That's right. So we're talk, okay, she talked about four hundred.
Depending on what the court.
And that was like three years ago?
Yeah.
Three, four years ago.
Probably prior to COVID.
Even minimum wage went up since then.
Right.
Well, I mean, he he would be content with that. I don't, I wanted to pose it to us, if that's what we wanna do. But that's a question for later. I just kind of wanna pose this as a starting point.
Yep.
So over the next month, I'll be working with Elena and civil service to make sure we have a good job description set, which I think we 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 do. It's it's not a very complicated job description. Um, and we'll review it with the police, we'll review it with the D P W to make sure all is cohesive and the way it works, but um, this will be a very exciting thing to see coming back. And I know that there's been a lot of people who have benefited from community service and really getting to work with Jerry, um, and getting to know him. He's just, he's just a good dude. Kenny, you wanna add anything?
Sure, one other thing, um, if Jerry is an employee, we can use him other places that we've done it in the past. So if we have like a water break and I'm I'm a couple guys short, you know, somebody on vacation, Jerry come, has come in before and dug for us, he's ran our equipment.
We would have to review that, because as we're trying to kind of shift and do proper civil service approaches, that may need to be a separate, that would probably have to be as an independent contractor.
Is that what we pay him then for, as an independent contractor, what we pay for?
Uh, yes, yes, but it's, so it would save us.
Yeah, just as a.
Do we have an independent contractor agreement with when we're doing it? No, I don't think we.
So he hasn't, he hasn't done any for us.
I think historically, we haven't been doing independent contracts. So I think we need to start formalizing that.
No, we haven't been. Yes, yes.
He hasn't done any any kind of work like that prior to COVID. Like I said, he would, he would come in and help us out before and
Yeah.
and it's much cheaper paying him twenty dollars an hour than
Yeah.
giving you bill.
Right now, he'll do like Greenway stuff, you know, we'll put it out there and he'll submit a proposal and we'll go that way. Um, he'll help with the work on the levy. Um, but that's kind of as him as as company and as LLC. But to your point, Doug, yeah, this is another thing that as we're cleaning up civil service approaches, we also have to get these proper, so. Absolutely right. So, any questions on that? Great. Uh, water infrastructure improvement, our five some million dollar grant that we once again went after, we once again were declines. Um, the nice thing uh in the email, which I'm gonna read here, was it basically suggested that we actually like, everything was right and worked fine, it's just that we didn't sort of make the cutoff for funding. So all the projects get reviewed and then given basically a a number, um, based on a whole slew of criteria. And as the letter said, I regret to inform you that your community's project was not selected to receive an award during this round. Your application was deemed acceptable, but unfortunately, there was not sufficient funding available to reach the project. So, you know, if the cutoff is set at like eighty-five for whatever their criteria is and we hit eighty-four, we're not gonna get funding. We're gonna schedule a follow-up meeting to find out how close to your work things we need to do, but this comes back to the fact that, and again, this is backwards. If we move forward on going into debt to pursue these larger projects, it makes us more likely to get funding later. Which is like backwards and terrible, but you know, such is life. So that is an unfortunate update. Um, also, not all that surprising with the way this works. And for the last one, I'm gonna pass this off to trustee Sauer to give us some updates on transfer station.
Okay.
Oh my god.
Um, I'm gonna do a little background on this. Um, we we belong to what's called the Eastern Rensselaer County Police Management Authority, which is authority of, I don't know, seven or eight municipalities. Um, that authority is working off legislation and bylaws that were created nineteen ninety.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the legislation specifically says town, not village. Um, we found out we don't have a contract with them, cause we thought we did. There is no contract. They said the contract is the acceptance back in nineteen ninety.
Wait, we went to.
We're re-upping the agreement though.
Yeah, we've been re, we.
They said they won't have one.
Wait, we did this last year.
I don't.
We had, we had to get them.
I I don't, I don't, they literally sent us a contract to re-up it, so I don't know why they're saying that, but anyway, I'm sorry, Doug.
Anyway, but going back, going back, yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
Continue.
I think they mean currently, while you most kind of gonna let, be whatever, but.
Didn't we do it last year?
We did. We're we're up for re- redoing it again. Uh, I have that as a thing to show you guys for later, but anyway, since I don't.
I don't, I don't, I don't think everything's really clean, cause we answer the bylaws in trying to see how do people go into it and how many people go out of it. And there's no reference to how municipalities join or don't join. It only makes references to the appointment of people served on board.
Yes.
And just on that point, you don't have to be a board member to be appointed by the legislative body, which we've been told all along too.
Oh, okay.
Sir.
Um. Fun fact to interject, the village tried to leave this legally back when Don Bagartis was mayor. And they pursued legally and it did not work in the village's favor. Uh, I have some boxes if you ever wanna look through that.
Well, there's nothing in the law that says who's in it. And there's nothing to bylaws, say, how do you become a member or how you not become.
Not only that, but every time you ask somebody over there, they give you different answers.
Yeah, I know.
But anyway, anyway.
So anyway, so all that said, um, the village has i- i- in the original formation of this, my understanding is that town was a member and the town pulled out years ago. Um, at some point in time, the village transfer station serve serves, started serving the town as well as the village. Um, it's not formalized that we are serving the town. It doesn't get reported that we serve the town. Um, the village pays a per capita fee, it's about twenty-two thousand dollars a year to be a member of the authority, plus the fees for recycling and whatnot. The town population is not included. So they are saying we have a much greater per capita than what we're doing and there's some question about this is not well-known, their board has an issue with it now, I think because of change or whatever. Um, and they are right. I mean, we have in our policy going, our rate sheet goes back to two thousand seventeen and my understanding is nothing has changed probably for two decades on the wait sheet, that we just say non-resident, non- non-resident contractor, we don't even say the town. So technically, we think anybody, technically. So, um, we had, we, as Denise, Kenny and and Keith and I have been meeting a couple times, so we know the rates. We met with uh Matt Curley, who's the director of the authority.
Yep.
We also then convened a meeting, um, that Mark and our shepherd attended, without
Town.
There.
Town, yeah, okay.
Uh, from the town, because we have an issue that we're serving the town. We, the village is paying for it.
Right.
And we lose money on the transfer station.
We do.
And I, my best figure is is probably less than five percent of the household residents in the village have permits, so. Uh, and use it if they have to permit. So it's, village residents are paying for it and it should be a fee-based service that should pay for itself if not pay for capital expenses and whatnot. We've been losing money, so.
Yes. Yeah. Right.
Um, our options there were, we stop serving the town. Uh, which I don't think anybody wants to do, because it, garbage will be all over the place.
No. Dead set again, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We uh we keep a bifurcated system where we charge town residents more for permits and whatnot, and then we with the village and we gotta do that with their permission. Or we're perhaps some arrangement where the town also uh perhaps pays the per capita fee, which I think is probably the only way we really could do it.
Right.
Um, just make them whole and get them off our back and we work out arrangement with the town where we are providing that service to the town. Um, we conceptually suggested, and this was taken up at a town meeting, I understand on Monday, just a concept that we have this issue. Just a concept that we have this issue. We're not, we're interested in working this out with the town and providing a service to a shared services agreement. And the first suggestion was that the town, perhaps if they did wanna become a member of the authority right now. And I think the authority would be okay with that, if they could pass through their authority money to us and we pay them and they don't have to be former members on the board, and they can talk about whether they wanna do that.
Sure. Road.
And that they um pay us the amount of money that covers our essentially cost of services for them and our loss that we take as a result of that.
Okay.
It was a figure that we're we're talking about.
Okay.
Um my understanding it is, I don't know Mark, if you wanna say anything, that the town board was receptive to talking. And the suggestion was we have a workshop or something, we then to to kinda talk about the source of it.
Tom supervisor, you don't have to share anything, but if you want to, certainly.
Tom, I shouldn't have helped him.
Okay.
And yeah, I I gave them the figure that Doug had given me and uh they seemed open to it, I think everybody understands and agrees with the fact that probably there is a lot of people in the town that use it, you know, one of the account, the counter notes, so was that so Eric, for instance, you know, pays to have garbage removed from his property.
Right.
And has never been to the transfer station.
Yeah.
You know, so we're asking some taxpayers to not use it, but you know, that's probably the same case in the village, because the village.
Oh, it is, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a very few people use it, yeah.
Yeah.
How many community, nine years I used to work.
Right, so I think, you know, I I think we were kind of in agreement, and what Doug just said, you know, you try to get as much of it as user um supportive as you can, you know, whatever that looks like.
Yeah. Okay.
But uh no, and I, it was, and it's too much to try and go into like I just said, I think we
Sure.
we needed, I suggested that we have a workshop and get everybody together and have a conversation so that we can but for the most part, yeah, everybody was, I mean, we've talked about for a while, I, you know, the board was aware of this was coming.
Yep, okay. That's great.
Probably, probably cheaper for the town to than to have to go through joining the authority, correct Mark?
I, you know, we really don't know.
No.
No.
No, well, if they had to build their own answer station after.
Right, right, they'd have to have their own location, correct, yeah.
Right.
Oh yeah, we were trying to do, yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
No, doesn't, no, doesn't, no.
No, definitely.
If people stopped getting their own trash pickup in the town and started using the village all the time, the transfer station all the time.
The transfer station.
That's a lot of garbage that's gonna come in.
Which people do, which people do, and you know, they pay a whatever the fee is for bag.
They took it.
Would we have, is there room for it?
Right.
Um we've had the
I mean, were more people, were more, I guess.
How many do we have dumpsters there do we have for that?
Four.
The, just people, garbage bags?
Garbage.
Three.
Okay, it 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 readily gets filled up and emptied pretty on a regular basis.
I I I think we're we're looking at this just not from a service, from a business model perspective, so we need to project out what the use would be. We've been talking about a scale, I think to full support within within the employees that we have a scale. And we know how much stuff is, cause we have no validation, but we're paying and charging.
It's just a calling scale.
It's that's a trust problem.
And there may need to be a whole new look at this, the um and our rates are way out, way out of whack, we're losing money off the rates itself.
Yeah. Mm, yeah.
So we have to look at the whole thing, we looked at six or seven other communities and we are way out.
Yep.
Way low.
Way low on every detail.
Especially with how much waste uh has changed over the past four or five years.
Yeah, so it, so there's a lot there, we also are we have to get, the the authority board to agree to agree to, so we have a timing issue, because our permits start in January.
Okay.
This ain't happening in June. The uh authority board is calling a meeting, their annual meeting, called it earlier than normal, um January ninth, I think it is, I'll be going to that to deal with this issue, so I'm hoping if if we can work out some concept by the ninth, we can bring it to them, get their word off on it.
Thank you.
And then put it together, it ain't happening, right?
But I think the concept right now, at this point, is gonna be just the uh the customer part.
Yeah.
For twenty-four five. And if anything, it's gonna be uh more involved than that, I think we have to play it.
I think the concept's like we were talking about, I just, we just need to get their approval, so they're not gonna be an obstacle to the right, that's all.
Right, I know I said that.
So can you just pro- propose stuff, and even if you don't do it, at least something proposed?
Yeah, I think, I think we'll get it through, I think they're so happy about the town giving per capita money and we can buy them off.
In fact, if you actually, if you're ever to.
Our our problem is our our permit system starts on January first, so my thought is that we look at starting a new system February first, if, cause we gotta get new, we're also talking about other things, stickers and sticker cards, is I think one of the problems, is people have a piece of card that they do it, they
Yes.
give it to other people to come and do it, and I think that we're not registering folks correctly.
Yeah.
Used to be, it used to be, go on something, it was a sticker that went on your windshield.
Yeah, yeah, we wanna go to that, and there's some timing here, so my own thought is, and is that we look at instituting a new structure February first if we can. And just let everybody keep their permits as it is right now into January and let that kick off then.
Okay.
Cause there's a lot of information, information, and it ends up in March and ends up in March, it's not that big of a difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is something, how's our W go?
It's better than. I was gonna say, it's better, that's better than issuing new ones in January, you know, in the jan- right.
And and just trying to rush it on everybody, yeah, especially if there's new regulations and.
Yeah, yeah. This has been something we've been trying to do, work for years, and it's great to have you pushing and moving forward, and it's it's super.
Yes, man.
A cou- a couple of things though, um we, there's cash being handled out there, I mean, one person out there by himself.
Yeah.
And with more business, there's more cash, you know, we'd like to have a security camera out there.
Yeah.
We're talking about having paper receipts or some way of doing it, maybe even credit cards and scanners
Mm.
to make it as efficient as possible, so that the attendee isn't, Keith isn't there spending ten minutes trying to get somebody processed while all the people are coming in. So we're looking at the whole
Yeah. Yep.
exchange system that's there.
Yep, I would, I would be in favor of all of that as well, anything that that leads to, you know, more safety and security and sort of uh, the the less cash typically for government life, the better, even though it can be inconvenient for people, so I'd still like to see us be able to take cash. Um but getting a more proper system while it's a big kind of pain for people running it, I think it is important, so that's, that's good. Uh yeah, this is, this is great. So and again, just to kinda summarize, I think what we've all thought, the transportation itself is, I think, a very important uh part of of what the village does. Uh and I think it's important that village and town um residents are able to use it. I know I use it regularly, um not just for like the the free brush and extra recycling if it doesn't fit. But if there's larger boxes that I can't fit, I know I can bring it there on Saturdays, and that's, the more, I I just use it all the time, so I see it as an important thing, so I'm glad to um see us continue to do that, we're making improvements there, but also people need to know that we're gonna be bringing things up to what it, closer to what it should be, because we've been losing money there on a regular basis. So, all right.
Thank you for sorting that whole out, it's long time, that was complicated.
Yeah, that's great. Uh yeah, Bobby, you have anything else for going on?
Well, I'm just looking at the agenda and it says motion to close public hearing, we didn't start, we didn't open one, right?
I I meant to cross that off for the last one, so please take, there's no public hearing, I thought I had taken that out, so.
I was looking for my notes, I said, I don't think we've called one.
Yeah, my apologies.
Okay.
All right, uh we've arrived at people to be heard section, just a quick review of the rules as we normally have due. Public can speak only during this time or as such uh time, as the majority of the board allows. Speaker must be recognized by the presiding officer, that's uh me, speakers must step, we say to the front of the room, but just kind of up, kind of near where Denise is, just just stand on Denise, no, no, uh but up so they can kind of address the board. Um start with by giving your name, address, and if there's an organization, let me get remarks to five minutes. Um uh although we can remove it more if we need to, but I don't think we will, uh you cannot yield your time to others. Again, these rules haven't changed, but just stating them out there. Uh board members may, with permission of the presiding officer, interrupt a speaker during their remarks, but only for the purposes of clarification or information. There's no requirement that a board member or board directly responds or has a dialogue, it's kind of left up to us. All remarks must be addressed to the board as a body and not to any member thereof. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, and dignity, and good taste, inappropriate language not be allowed. Interesting parties or their representatives may be uh may address the board also by written communication, so just to get an idea, how many people would like to address the board tonight? One, okay. Take it away, sir, you have five minutes.
All right, uh Tom, keep an eye, I live at Seven River Street, I'm in town.
Hi, Tom.
Uh and excuse me if I'm not formal, because I've never had to do this before. Um so, as you guys know, obviously, there's sources being built.
You're, you're fine, you're fine.
Their property borders my property, uh they're the north side, my north side, their south side. Um had nothing but problems with them throughout pretty much this entire process, I've dealt with the project manager uh for for several different things. Um quick example, uh and as the police officers are here, I had to call the police last month for them pumping concrete at quarter to five in the morning, um while I have a two-week-old baby and a postpartum wife. Yeah, you guys can imagine that if you have kids, um or wife.
Oof. Oof.
Anyway, uh yeah, uh they came on my property, cut down a tree that I had planned on building a tree fort for my son in without permission. Um to, basically, they asked what they could do to make it right, I gave them options, so they said, too bad, um go find an attorney. Um
Can can you explain that a little bit, what right did I have to come on your property and cut down a tree?
Well, they they said that it was a mistake, I know that it wasn't, um I sent them a photo of a tree. Uh we had an agreement that they were clearing a bunch of trees that provided shade to my property, some were on my property, some were on theirs, they were in the line. Um those trees were providing shade to my property. I said, yes, I have no problem with you cutting down these trees, so long as uh the fence that goes up is landscaped and you take down the couple of trees that are hanging over my garage at the same time while you're doing all the other stuff. Um they said, yep, sure, no problem, okay, great. Uh they cut down the trees they wanted, a few weeks went by, I contacted the project manager, asked if um they would cut down the rest of the trees. They said, yep, trees aren't done yet, fence isn't done yet, so we'll get to, we get to, I said, okay, great. Um here's the specific tree that I'm talking about, I took a photo, sent it to him, um it's an old dead tree that's hanging over the roof of my garage. Um sent him a photo, he said, okay, great, I came home the next day and they had cut down, so just for scope, the tree that I asked him to cut down is about eight inches in circumference, it's very tall, it hangs over a garage, it's pictured in the photo. The tree that they cut down is about uh twenty-six inch around pine tree. Um it it was just the base of the pine tree.
Tom, which which one is we're talking about here?
Yeah, so you see the uh uh
This is the old barber and fricky spot, so.
Okay, so come to the north some, that'd be down.
Yeah.
Yep, so you see the brown roof right there?
Right here.
Yeah, so that's my property there, um so that, those trees between old barber and fricky and that property there are the, that's the the property line.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um so if you actually, if you look, the uh if you move the cursor to the right to giant trees, that one right there, that was the pine tree that was there. Um that's the one that was cut down, uh there was about fifteen foot left there um for a treehouse for my son, came home, gone. Anyway, that's all beside the point, um at this point, um that was more so just to prove what has been going on with them. Um at this point now, they've uh they've put in a dumpster uh seven feet from my fence and uh where we eat dinner uh in the summertime outside. Uh if the dumpster wasn't going to be loud, attract bees and smell putrid in the summertime, as I know it well, because they're gonna be getting rid of food waste there. Um I would have no problem with it, but again, like I said, I mean, I've already listened to their construction for months. Uh I know I'm probably a little bit late in in some of this, um and I acknowledge that, that's my responsibility and I should, probably should have taken action sooner, but honestly, I didn't have any idea. Um so, yeah, they they have a loading dock there, uh I did read the code, um I have it cited on my phone and I can read that so that we all are on the same page, uh it it is, it's it's number five oh four, I don't know what that little squiggly thing is for handed. Um but it says commercially uses, uh neighborhood grocery store or laundromat, um I didn't see anything in there for like convenience stores, so I sort of attributed it to grocery store. Um use shall be designed primarily to serve the surrounding neighborhood, no problem with that. Adequacy adequacy in configuration of access and off-street parking during peak load shall be a special concern to prevent disruption of residential neighborhoods. Um I don't think that adequacy and configuration was a special concern to prevent disruption of residential neighborhoods, since uh there are only two residential buildings that share a property, um and they put their loading dock and dumpster right up against our property.
Tom, did they ever give you like a survey for top properly like border stuff, with you?
Um so they 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 did send me a site plan, um I'm not a contractor, I have no idea how to read a site plan. Um I I have a a decent amount of knowledge, I'm definitely not ignorant to it, I I do do quite a bit of work with that. Um but looking at it, I don't know what I'm looking at, to be honest with you.
Okay, okay.
Um they didn't send it to me because, they didn't send it to me because they were trying to be helpful, they sent it to me because if I didn't give them permission to move the power that's coming off the power pole underground, they told me they were gonna put a dumpster in my backyard, um.
Is this, you dealt with this Charles?
Charles?
No, uh Chance Wilk, his name is, yeah, his name is Chance.
Yeah, okay. Mm-hmm.
Um and to, to be honest with you, when I've spoken to him, he's been very polite, but actions are not lining up with with words here.
I have that in mind.
What he's telling you.
Right, um it's been nothing but apologies, how can we make it right, and then there's nothing to really make it right. They added one small vinyl fence um to our property, as sort of like a here you go type of thing. Um and even that, they had contractors park in our driveway and block our vehicles in in the mornings, I couldn't get to work on time, so again, it's been nothing but 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 problems, uh so anyway, my main concern, and I know I'm limited to five minutes, um
Oh, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine.
Well, we've been in depth, so you got a lot more time.
Look, this was scheduled, or this was a part C to that, that uh that there.
Final four.
Mm-hmm.
Uh use shall not cause nuisance to neighboring residential uses due to noise activities or schedule. Um so I mean, I think that kinda speaks for itself, as described. Um adequate screening and fencing shall buffer the use from surrounding residential uses, now there is a fence, um there is definitely a fence, it's about six, eight feet tall, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Is that the same fence that's you can see on Church Street, same style, it's got on Church Street, Tom?
Yeah, that's caused by Samantha, yeah.
No, so so that fence.
That's eight feet, that one.
Yeah, so that eight-foot fence is on our property line. Um our porch, which was existing at the time, sits roughly six feet off the ground. So I see right over that fence, um that's how I've actually been talking to these people, I just walk out on the porch and I can see them.
I got you.
Um and I just talk to them, they they ran a uh a giant roller and a compactor, I have the video, if anyone's see it. Um that shook darn near every picture off of the wall in my house at seven AM. Um and it could be a little bit off, it was before eight AM. Um yeah, so I had to go outside and and ask them to stop, and luckily, since I'm standing on the porch, the guy can see me, so he doesn't do that anymore. Uh yeah, so that's all been going on, and I've been trying to take care of it with stewards, cause I'm not, I don't wanna cause a big fuss. Um but at this point, it's just, it's, I mean, I don't wanna be sitting on my porch eating dinner with my family.
Yeah.
Um and have to smell garbage and get, you know, have my kids, you know, I don't, I, we have a two-month-old, I have no idea if he's allergic to bees. If there's bees attracted by that dumpster and he gets stung by it, the mess.
No, it doesn't matter.
You don't wanna find out that way.
No, you know what I mean, exactly, you know, it's it's it is a huge inconvenience, um.
It doesn't matter, people.
So right now, that's, so now right now, that dump dumpster is the biggest issue for you.
Time.
Uh yeah, yeah, the dumpster and then the 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 schedule of deliveries for the loading dock, I mean, they, the loading dock's poor, there's concrete there, I mean
Yeah.
what can, there's no other place for me to put loading dock. Um there could have been if they'd done the site plan differently, but I mean, you know, again, it it's, it's been going on a whole lot.
I know, I know that the current location of stewards, the neighbors have had an an issue with deliveries
Oh, sure.
during, because of the the refrigeration units on the on the trucks themselves unloading.
Oh, that's a lot.
Yes, and that, and and finally, corporate, they contacted corporate and corporate comply, had had them comply.
Yeah. But initially, the drivers told them, the the only, the people that go, you know. Well, yeah, I mean, and the drivers, I'm sure they work for stewards, but they probably are independent contractors as well, um so they probably don't care, they're gonna pay you the way.
Yeah, they're, yeah. Can you um email me the site plan that they send you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or send me pictures?
I think your email's on the website, it's like, I'll send it over to you, absolutely, um I'll send you the picture of it, but yeah, I mean, that
Yes, yeah. Alright.
to your point, um as far as the refrigeration units, they had a a generator there um for, that ran for three days non-stop, that was farther away than this dumpster, um but still could be heard all hours of the night, so I mean, I'm I'm not I'm not gonna be shocked if that thing banging around when they close at eleven o'clock, it's gonna
Sure. You're you're the second person now to report a lot of frustrations with the process, so we'll uh, we'll see what we can do to follow up.
Waking people up.
Yeah, it's gonna be up to six weeks before they open it.
Yeah, but that's more national, right?
Everyone, we need to agree.
So I'm, I'll maybe do something before they get out.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, it's been a topic, but thanks for that.
You're not sure, so don't even have to say sorry to me. Thanks for putting your mouth out.
Thanks, Tom. Oh, okay.
Anyone else wanted to share? With any board, all right, hearing none, we are going to move on. Uh we are on to reports. Um Sergeant Hudson, who's been at sergeant training, is not present this evening. Um Officer David is, and he is so excited to answer any and all flash, I'm just kidding. I I didn't, I'm not putting him on the spot, but um let me get the police report up on the screen and summarize a few things, unless Bobby or Doug, you wanna summarize anything on the police reports? Because uh Sergeant Hudson is not here this evening. So you all have it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks like we're right on uh on 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 target for the number of calls, twenty-three versus twenty-four, pretty close.
Yes, yes. Um trying to think here, um I know that uh the individual who works for dispatch, who provides us lots of information, we were retiring soon from dispatch, so I do have to have some conversations with dispatch about how to keep getting the information that's uh.
It's gonna be a new computer system starting next year, so.
Oh, really?
It'll be done differently anyway.
Okay, that's good.
Actually, Mike might have a better, either Ryan's on mic, cause on the committee implementing the new case, that he might have a better idea.
Okay.
If you can ask a question now, that'd be done, that's, they're doing training.
I can, I can look into that, I got, I have some candidates, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, do you know a guy? But uh Bernie, who is an officer part-time for us, works full-time down there, and he has been the one who's been not only just grabbing this information, but he's really sifted through it on a regular basis to make sure that the information is as accurate as possible, which from what I understand requires a lot of extra steps, so uh I've been always been grateful to Bernie and to dispatch for allowing you to do this, it's a big service that has helped us, so, thank you.
Was the gunshots in the village just the sounds?
Sounds, anyway, that's one of the fireworks, uh I'm talking about that one there.
Um do you have the money?
The other, the other one was I I I called, that was, this was somebody called, somebody shot down here a couple of weeks ago, that was probably the a couple, there, people were hunting down here.
In the village?
Uh.
Or just at the?
Yeah, right at, well, just at the end of the greenway.
Oh, okay.
My sister-in-law was there walking her dog, and it was two gunshots, yeah.
Oh.
I hate to say like, we have, do we have to put signs on the greenway to say no hunting?
Oh, there should be, there there actually should be, yeah.
Kenny, we need some signs on the greenway, no hunting.
None, so it's not, it can't.
Or you can put a.
Yeah, actually, hunting in the village is allowed by ANCON, as long as they're doing the setback requirements from a house, just like.
We have a local law.
The village?
That prohibits gunfire and cross uh bowing.
Crossbow.
Crossbow. No, we 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 passed, we.
Arrows.
It arrows, yeah.
We have a local law that prohibits in the village, yeah.
We have a local law prohibits that, we did that based on neighbor neighbor complaint.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, about two, three years ago.
Yeah, yes.
So it may be.
So let's make sure we know when, when we supply, we have a lot of.
Chris.
Yes, remember that, yeah.
Yeah, so it may be like, there may, yeah, we did that, yeah.
Okay.
There's Chris Saunders, who gets to the board.
After that, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I remember, I remember.
Yes.
So can we put, could we put posted signs?
Yeah.
And say no hunting, and maybe don't.
Which is against the law.
I mean, can we post it?
That just.
Yeah.
It's our property.
I was working in the village while there's no.
Yeah.
Some of it, yeah.
Firearm using or.
Yeah.
Seems a little dangerous.
Well, uh.
Like, one little.
Kenny, wanna make some calls, talk to uh Sergeant Hudson as well? See what we can post down there.
Sure.
Do you guys have any other thoughts, questions, comments?
No.
Looking for motion to approve the police partner report?
I know.
Thank you, Doug, need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Megan, I'll, Megan meet you.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, closer abstentions? Carries, code report. Mark, anything you wanna highlight?
Uh, no.
I saw some cases closed, that's cool.
That's um, the house on, is it Troy Street, Troy Street, they had a tag on for a long time, Troy Street?
Yeah, A Troy Street, right here.
Yeah, it's um, it seems like they're, looks like there was people there working on it.
I haven't seen it, I, but it could be, I don't divide it all the time.
Okay, they're allowed to go in and work, right?
Yeah.
You're not the ones having to fix it, maybe they can.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's something that's related to COVID.
Yeah.
But they have to have a permit to do that, don't they?
Uh I have to go back and check if I, probably if I tagged it, if I red tagged it, then I do make everybody get a permit for the.
Okay.
I did notice, I went to.
It's been so long, I don't know.
You're right, there is activity, there is activity up there, I I went to my brother's house yesterday, and there's definitely activity at that house.
But yeah. And that's good, cause we wanna see these things running back off.
Uh I would point out, it's not on there, uh but I am uh gonna get a new hip uh next Thursday, so I'll be out for a couple of weeks.
So the Walmart grabbing a new hip off the shelf, is that not, not how it works?
Yeah.
Uh good luck, speedy recovery.
Six million dollar man, before he's done.
Uh we'll start, we'll start shooting hoops in early January, okay?
How how are we, how are we covering, being out, where are we saying, is it public, people asking for permits, or how's like other ones?
It's gonna all be very slow until Mark is back, or until we hire a part-time person.
So I'm gonna, I got a new laptop personally, and I was gonna put like their email on there, and I already told the office, you know, he he asked you to call me. It's not like we're gonna do a lot, so.
Okay.
I'll deal with it while I can.
Okay.
Cause you don't have, you don't have a a back, I mean, we don't use, excuse me, Mark, the the town building inspector is our backup, correct?
So can you respond to that?
Do you reciprocate at all, I didn't know.
Yeah, we do, we do like usually for after hours and stuff.
Or for situations where Mark can't be involved in.
Right, like a fire, a fire, just, right, you have to determine whether someone go back into their structure, if it's, that had been a fire or something like that, code enforcement, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Alright. I'll make the motion, we accept Mark's report as presented.
Thank you, Bobby, need a second, thank you, Brett, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions? Alright, carries, thank you, Mark. Oh, I meant to ask, I feel like there was one property we were getting Bill Cottrell to do a report on, Third Street?
Oh, yeah, Thirty Third.
Anything moved on that?
Wasn't, when are we?
No, I.
No, we weren't gonna have it done on that, no, we didn't need it.
No, no, it was just pursuing taking it down.
No, I, no, the only thing I talked to Bill about was the possibility of uh the Senate Street property, if you guys need something on that, but no, it's pretty obvious too.
No, we, it was, we were talking about if we were gonna bring someone in to take it down, or have Kenny's guys do it, and Kenny was like, please have other people come in.
Yes, it was the trailer one.
The trailer on Thirty Thirty Third Street.
Yes.
We had, yeah, we had, we had a discussion, I mean, Kenny and I talked about it too, so.
Twenty, twenty.
Do we have legal authority to have someone come in and take it down?
That was the information that I gave you, my interpretation was they just knew.
Okay.
Uh based on, you know, my determination, and I thought for that project, I I didn't see us needing to take it any further than that.
I'm gonna have to review that, put that up on the front burner with Elena, yeah.
Cause we wanna get that taken care of.
Yes. Yes, the only times we've done it in recent history was after it was deemed unsafe by an engineer report. Yes, we did, we had to, we had to.
That's what I was talking about, you can't just take it down.
Yeah.
Right, you have to give notice to them.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Give notice to the property owner?
Yes, yes.
Right, and Mark, you're, he's he's just, he's aware of it, right?
He's aware, he's.
Yeah, we still have to do formal legal.
No, understood, right.
Yeah.
Also, be aware that is on the newest list too, I know that's a process, but the county is starting, we got the process to take ownership of that.
Sure.
Oh, so we wanna get that thing cared before that.
Yeah.
How, however, however that be, the county is in process of taking ownership.
Yeah, loving all the Ted's, go so then the counties.
Okay, alright.
Build that.
Alright, uh thank you, Mark, sorry to ask another question. Uh next report, treasurer's report. Denise, anything you wanna point out?
No, um Olivia had her baby, she was a member twenty nine. I'm doing well, we're muddling through. And we're sick of water bill, water service bills to go out, hopefully by the end of the week, if we really need to put some revenue in. And I'm still muddling through, getting the AFR file, which has some quick push, puts the. Hopefully I will be well soon, we're hoping, muddling through.
Denise, how's the payroll thing happening, are we on track for that, the one in January first?
Yeah, there's been a lot of back and forth questions, I have a meeting next Tuesday.
That'll be.
The girl and me at eleven o'clock to go over more information.
But, does that get a new, are they gonna do training of employees on how to use the system?
Yes, um I had to use, do a portable company file, and that was digitally sent to them, they extracted out the information that they needed. So now it's more like a touching base, to make sure that it's the way we want it, and who's gonna have permissions to do what. Then we're gonna plan on doing a couple of people side by side.
And that they built a system to to upload the.
I don't know if they built it, but there's not been any issue here that I'm aware of, so I think it's all going smoothly.
Trustees, you obviously received very important baby pictures.
You have a baby?
Yes, on the phone, just texting them.
And I'm sure it.
Most importantly, when's Olivia coming back to work?
Yeah, right, I don't know.
No.
Probably next week.
She had the baby two weeks ago, that's funny.
Actually, we got, we got, we got the laptop working, right, so so she's able to finally develop, and I'll get the recording online in a minute, soon, yeah.
Yes.
She can fi, find, cause I need, I need a uh a copy of the resolution or I sent to the emails.
Yeah, you gotta get, tell us what uh what month that was in, to make it.
Yeah, we looked at it.
I don't know.
Alright, we'll, I'll I'll keep looking, we did a resolution, um where with the streetlights, the national grid, and I I can't find it.
Right, ag. Agreeing to, we, the resolution agreeing to proceed with the buyout was of uh like uh two hundred and forty six thousand.
That wasn't that long ago.
No, wasn't, it was like, I wanna say Octo, September, October, at the latest.
Yeah.
Was it a resolution or a motion?
It might have been just a motion, you're right, it might not be a resolution.
I don't, I don't remember drafting a motion on it.
I think they may have given a a baseline.
Oh, did they give us one?
That's what I gotta figure out, I can't remember.
It did, cause you, yeah, it's in that packet that you signed, I think, so.
Yeah, I'll find it, we'll find it, we'll work on it, yeah, he just.
Okay, just we gotta find that sooner than later, so.
Yep, okay, um unless you guys have any other questions, comments, looking for motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Motion.
Second.
Second, Deb got it first, sorry.
Wow.
Um so Bobby and Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions? Thank you, thank you Denise, clerk Debbie, clerk report. Hi, Deb.
Pretty much the same as what Denise said, um.
Yep, yep, yep.
I'm looking at a baby.
Yeah, we're working on bills, trying to get the bills out, just our general work, um you know, doing the window and transfer permits and death certificates and anything that comes along.
Yep. Yep.
Just kinda general every day.
I can just go fumble up from the sitter, so.
We might be calling you.
We may, yes.
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
We'll let you know.
Any questions for Judy?
Just for you.
Looking for a motion to approve the Depp, uh clerk Debbie, clerk report, Deb, need a second, Brett, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions? Carries, Kenny?
You wanna put the pictures up?
I will be, I I I haven't been in my new business spot, but uh I'll jump right onto that, so just bear with me for a minute as I uh time warp into the future here.
Wow, Kenny.
Wow, Kenny. Do you want a rock, Russell?
It's not a cute baby.
So I mean, it's.
It is not a cute baby.
We've been, we've been doing make pickup almost, we're done with the header on the dome. I think we got, I think there are over a hundred and ten loads of leaves out of those.
Really?
What's that, Ken?
There are over a hundred and ten loads of leaves this year.
That's great, any issues, like people putting stuff in our post throughout? I feel like we have it down to a system and people know how to do it, and it's working, and that's awesome.
You know, there's been a couple, a couple piles of brush out, my guys just go around it, I mean, we can't suck it up the machine, so.
We cannot, yeah.
Um everything else is good, we've got the banners down, the flags down, Christmas decorations up, we installed that stop sign.
Thank you for putting that reflector tape, it made a big difference.
Yes.
Next day, I saw it.
Well, I got, I got a new sign to put up there, um the the one I had was just an old junky one, but I had to drill through it to put the flags on, so I didn't wanna ruin a seventy dollar sign.
And two flanks.
Yeah, appreciate that, appreciate that.
Is that a man?
I figured, I figured a couple more weeks, I'll be able to just put a a regular sign up and.
Does make a difference though, people come around that corner slower, they hit him.
Five seconds.
That's good, that's good.
Somebody go right to it. Um in the truck, so.
So this is DPW truck number two?
Truck number two.
What year?
It's a red, it's a two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
Had a little engine noise, Greg wasn't sure if he could tap it, so we brought it down to the Apollo. They started to diagnose it, um they went to put it on the lift and the truck started flexing. So they got under it, looked, and the frame is completely battered on the truck, there's there's pictures, you can, I don't see the pictures.
Yep.
Um so they would not even do work on it. So we we got it back and Greg already had it stripped. That's a plow truck with a plow, we use it every year, so the solution for this year is we, my plan is to take the truck from the sewer department, which is a two thousand nineteen F three fifty, it's already got a plow on it, it's already set up for a sander when we bought it. New, we had it set up with the heavy duty suspension in the back, and I just have to get something for the sewer plant, and I I did a little research, I went down to Upstate Auto, and I can find a decent vehicle for Keith to drive back and forth for around seven hundred.
So.
I did get a quote from the Apollo.
This is the new truck replacement, which is about fifty thousand or higher?
That's just, that, yeah, that's without getting the outfit kit with the lights and everything else on it, it's gonna be about fifty five, fifty six thousand.
That would be if we went brand new, which is not what Kenny is advocating for, by the way, thank you, Kenny.
Right. Yes, I mean, I'd like to have a break, um I think what else.
Uh here. Here to the possibilities, and I think he gave you guys hard copies of these.
Yes, yeah, we have everything.
Yes.
So.
Um I I I think I double sent you that picture, that they're both the same vehicle.
They do look like the same vehicle.
They are.
It's fantastic.
So we just, we just need something, cause Keith has to drive back and forth this week, I don't know, week to one transport anyone to them. Um you know, he needs to have four wheel drive, he didn't have a sewer plant, stuff like that.
Special winner.
You know, a a small SUV, he can throw, he can throw some tools in the bag. My recommendation is the more expensive one, only has sixty thousand miles on it.
Is this the one we doubled?
Yes.
Okay.
Um it's 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 got twenty thousand less miles than the closest one, closest other one to it, that's only a thousand dollars more.
The Jeep Patriot.
The price circled is the price that he gave me down there, he wrote that on that paper.
Yep. Has Greg gotten, take a look at this one?
He has not, I haven't even, I, you know, I haven't even, I went down yesterday, Bruce and I went down and looked at a few options, and I told the guy I didn't wanna spend anymore, then we had to. I just need something small, little mileage, four wheel drive. I don't know if we can go with emergency purchase, or if I have to do more folks. I mean, I did show Greg the pictures, the, you know, and stuff like that, but.
Um.
Obviously, I'll take it with me if we if we take it for a test drive or whatnot.
Sure.
Do you have this money in your budget right now?
I don't know if I do or not.
Okay.
I didn't really have a vehicle replacement budget.
Right.
I got a dump truck in my budget.
No, we're not touching that dump truck, Kenny, you're getting the dump trucks.
Um trustees, thoughts, comments, questions for Kenny?
I.
Well, we need to give it, I mean, financial planning, we should have vehicles, there are companies, it's not right, it's a lot, so.
I I think it's a.
So I mean, I don't know if you wanna take that out of the sewer budget, because it's gonna go for the sewer, I mean, we're stealing the sewer department's truck.
Could also split it, in a sense.
Yeah. I'm sure we can find these thousand dollars.
You can take the idea enough like the best.
What's the value of the sewer department's products?
I think this idea of swi, swi, switching is really important.
Right.
Oh, it's it's a great, I mean, it's Kenny's, Kenny's idea is is awesome, thank you, and I appreciate Kenny for going the extra mile for this too.
Yeah, I have a great idea, I mean.
This is the. Yeah.
This is the most recent one.
To me, it's a no-brainer.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And Kenny, would you, you would prefer the, just based on this, what the looks of, you said the the sixty thousand miles, right?
Yeah, it's got, it's got sixty thousand miles, I mean, I know that it's not an ideal vehicle.
Is that for Petriad?
Yeah, it's a, it's a need for right now, you know, if it lasts a couple of years.
Right.
No, these are all the same number, he's got, he's got different clothes, but they're from the same banner, so he would need to make up to other numbers.
Right. And you know, if we do end up in, you know, in the year, or the year, or the year, where we could buy a new truck in the next year or two,
and I would assume.
we could always take that, it could be for code enforcement, where we could use it for, you know, for to replace, you know, Mark's vehicle that he doesn't have.
Sure.
Greg's always borrowing one of our trucks when he has to make a parts run, you know, our mechanic, when he's gotta run, you know, the Napa or up to Bond and Menity or whatever. You know, instead of using this truck, he usually takes one of ours and it kinda leaves us short.
Okay.
Tom is an expert too, if you, if he could question the board if possible.
Yeah. Uh as sort of a a subject matter expert in vehicles, um do you have anybody who looks at these things before you buy them?
Yeah, we have a a mechanic.
Yeah. Yeah, Greg Gardner, you know Greg?
Greg, no.
Gardner, he used to be the.
He was, he was, he left, he retired from deliveries. Okay, alright, just goes.
Yes.
Have a lot of experience with Chrysler products, and that's here for me.
Okay, um Kenny, we need, um according with procurement policy, I think between five thousand and under twenty thousand needs um a written uh proposal or a quote from at least three different vendors.
Three vendors, not three different products.
Three, right, three vendors, now, if you go online and and print one out, or you call them and say, hey, what will do you give us to us, you know, to us, that counts. But we do need to do that, cause that's our procurement policy, uh that being said.
I go move it for what we're.
But I'm confused, so even on a, like a vehicle, so we're, if we choose this Jeep Patriot, he's gotta find a price on a Jeep Patriot, that.
That's what I would say is, if it's a twenty fourteen, is that, what's it say?
Yeah, something close.
Does he only need one more?
Two thousand fourteen.
Because he has the Apollo.
If it's a twenty thirteen.
Three, oh.
Well, he has the Apollo.
But that's not a similar product, and that one's too high, that would be a different threshold.
Or just that.
Okay.
But how can you even compare to our used?
I would, I would honestly go into Google and do a twenty fourteen Jeep Patriot and get two other presets and.
Just, just do that topic, right.
Go ahead, can you, can you?
End with a mile away.
Yeah.
Then that's legit to do that.
You know, I can ask the cheapest price.
Yes, absolutely, as a, as a school teacher, I just grab quotes, yeah, I I grab quotes from companies that are something, so.
Then we also pass the law, so you don't have to do that. Okay.
But I meant we wanted to do it quickly, so somebody else doesn't buy it off.
Yeah.
You should be able to.
So you can do that quick, where do we need to do it?
Literally can do it tonight, I may even be able to do it right now, if you wanted me to.
Right.
What do we need to do to prove it, either tonight or in a special meeting, or could be like allocate funds, or.
Now, can you, I guess.
Do you know, we just take a couple minutes and find two quotes online, and then you can do it in a couple minutes?
Kenny, wanna go, well, we we want Greg to review it and to look over them first.
Yeah, but I mean, I can still get two quotes, I mean, if if we do, if we do have Greg look over it and we decide not to do it, we don't have to buy it, we can do something else, right?
If if we're able to pull money from budgets, um sewer and DPW, it's just a matter of all. If if we're able to pull money from budgets, um sewer and DPW, it's just a matter of authorizing this purchase. The other possibility is is kind of an emergency, because it's snow season and we're down on plastic.
Well, it's like, Kenny, imagine, can we do the emergency procurement policy, can we have a fall under call?
That's where I think the vehicle's coming, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking, um.
Okay.
Are you guys good with, if we we agree on a a good thing Greg's looked it over, to authorize it for as an emergency purchase?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Jesse, Kenny, like, it should be at an amount up to eighty five hundred or something like that.
I'm happy with the eight thousand eighty five hundred, I think that's fine, are you guys in general agree?
Yes.
Case is over the word "how" and we have to go somewhere else.
Sure, sure, does that work for you guys?
Yes.
Alright, Kenny, have Greg check them out, get a couple more online vendors and.
Okay. And it'll be, it'll be the seventy nine hundred or whatever, plus a twenty one dollar inspection fee, plus the twenty, or fifty dollars, so it'll be an extra seventy one dollars.
So if we say up to eighty five.
That's fine.
He probably will definitely.
That's fine, what's that?
Here's two quotes, two.
I would say say up to eighty five, just case this vehicle doesn't break.
You can.
Yeah.
Can you say something?
I got two, I got two quotes from Carfax right here, for twenty fourteen Jeep Patriots.
Yep.
One with fifty seven thousand, uh fifty six thousand seven hundred twenty seven miles is ten thousand four ninety nine.
Forward those links, well, it's an emergency purchase, so as long as Greg is good with these, but I'm I'm in agreement with Tom, definitely I wanna have someone check them over.
Let's still do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll we'll take them for a ride, and I'll let Greg bring it down here and pull it over a bit.
Um. I actually, we, my family bought a used vehicle from them, we also got a really good deal, um but it would have helped us to have had a mechanic look it over and be like, this is coming, this is coming, so. Um, nothing like colossal, but like little dumb things, like the battery was like basically near its end of life, little things like that.
Right.
So, but I liked I liked them too, so, alright, so yeah, once you have Greg check it over and you're good with it, grab a couple other, you know, ones online, emergency purchase, and we're gonna go.
Okay.
Thank you Kenny, appreciate the way that you've approached as well, not asking for a fifty thousand dollar vehicle, always gets bonus points from the board.
Kenny, I just I just forwarded you that link, okay?
Okay.
Um, any other questions for Kenny on the report, which I'm scrolling back to, uh that is not the page I was on. Uh, any other things you guys wanna ask or mention the reports for Kenny?
Um, no, no, just that, that was the, that was the big thing.
Alright, alright, sweet, I'm looking for a motion.
Another another water break on Scott Street, but that's part of the course.
It's fantastic, looking for a motion to approve the highway reports, thank you Bobby, thank you Deb for the second, for the discussion, all in favor?
Motion.
Aye, pose your abstentions, Kerry's, Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong, that via project that we went for that we didn't get again includes replacing the uh Scott Street water line, right?
I think so.
Yeah, we may need to revisit that in January.
I just, one more thing, so I forgot, so it's been brought to my attention by a few people now, Willard Street, between Church and Main. It's a two way street, most people use it to bypass Church Street, you know, they go down, there's been some new people there and they have two huge one ton trucks that are parked right on the street.
I noticed that this morning and I almost called the police about it.
And I put, I I ended up, there was a sign up there, and it faded, you couldn't read it, so I replaced it with the no parking.
No parking.
And they were still parked there all day, but it's, um Judy almost got hit the other day.
Yep.
I have.
We just had a hell of a time getting the plow trucks around that corner.
Where is that, Kenny, I'm sorry?
Turned on Willard Street, we're nails and.
Right right across the American Legion.
Oh, well, yes, yes, actually, good thing you brought that up, because I got a call from the uh fire department, who's the Falls Fire Department, about just that. They were out trying to swing around with the with their with the fire truck, and they couldn't get around that corner because that truck being parked on Willard Street.
So this is the spot, Legion's here, Stewart's is here, there's a sign right here that says no parking to corner.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think I noticed it today, the new sign is about here that says no parking to corner.
Yep, and we put that up, um to replace it, but it was fading, couldn't even read it, I assumed it said no parking here to corner, so that's where I replaced it.
Yep.
When did you, when did you replace that?
Um, yesterday or the.
Very recent, I noticed this morning, I would tell you, that vehicle was parked right here, and it was not like a subtle little cute pickup truck, that thing was huge.
So I actually got a call right before I came here, like a text message about Willard as well, that one of my, he almost got hit.
So my, my concession is, and I don't know what we have to do to do it, just let's make that street no parking here, that would probably.
I agree, a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Local law, public hearing, uh can local law folks work on a um a law with Elena? Just let, it's, I just did one with Miss, you and I have numerous copy paste.
Yep, yep, yep.
Perfect.
So Willard Street between Church and Main.
Yeah.
Church and Main, yep.
I I think the reason why the sign was up there, if I remember right, is where that car is parked now in that garage where the the candy store used to be, I think it's not have a driveway, that driveway.
It's a, it's a, it's a shared driveway, it's very funky there.
It's not a shared driveway, he has a driveway to use the driveway to get to his back of his property, it's not his driveway.
And well, I know that with the owner before, a couple owners before.
Can he park behind the house if he drives down the driveway?
He drives down the driveway, he can, he can, he can use the driveway as a means of conveyance to get to the back of the building, the driveway belongs to.
I know that, um, Natalie lived, when Natalie lived up in the.
That's why the sign.
Right there.
There's Kenny, there's the old faded sign.
Hey, you were riding by all the time.
No, that's it, right.
But he has a garage.
Right, well, yeah, now, it's 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 not able to.
Use it.
There it is in twenty fourteen.
If the fire truck can't get down there.
Oh, do not block driveway.
Oh, I lost it.
That's all you need to know, and unfortunately, it's like, we gotta be able to make it.
Yeah, it says do not block driveway. Do not block driveway.
Do not block driveway.
Yeah. Correct, well, on the other side, there's no parking from, from Stewart's, right?
Do not block driveway.
Yeah, it needs to be both sides of the road, for sure.
Yep.
Yeah, so we need to address that local law.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, alright. Which unfortunately, by the way, means that the no parking here to corner sign can't stay up there, cuz that's not what was there.
Can you guys add in by Stewart's there, where that's always under question with the people getting tickets, where that green thing, yeah, like painting yellow or do something if you're doing that?
Sorry. That's this intersection right here.
Well, that curb used to be yellow, when they did the Route twenty two over and the curbs were changed out, that part was changed out, they didn't wanna paint yellow anymore, but it used to be painted yellow halfway through the business, right?
People park there all the time, all the time.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I think it's hard, like the same thing with the fire truck trying to turn.
Yeah, I'm sure, that whole.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely.
That's another.
Well, the fire truck can't get in there, nothing else matters, that's what you, that's what.
Right.
Yeah, that's another tough intersection, but I think that we we've been trying to review the laws on parking where there's intersections and trying to apply that.
Right, and the.
That's another one of those projects we've always tried to.
Well, maybe it's in the parking study somewhere.
Yeah.
Could be.
There's also, someone also, and they also, the fire department also reached out about, to me around about the corner of Church and Elm Street.
Oh, yeah.
Elm.
Turning across from the armory, by the tattoo, by the Patriot tattoo.
Oh, yeah.
It's hard to see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You go around that corner, there's parking right there, there should be no parking at that.
Right here?
No, Elm Street, Elm Street.
Oh, on the side.
Wrong Elm Street.
Right there, right there.
This Elm Street.
No, no, no.
No, no, he was right.
Yeah.
He was, he was.
Yeah, you were, I'm sorry, yes, you were.
Armory?
Armory, yes, right here.
Yeah. There's parking where, right here?
That there should be no parking going around to where the old senior center was, that whole stretch there.
Yes.
We'll have to review the local law to see what it says, there's possibly set up a new one, boy, that'll be its own little can of worms.
Right.
That's crazy, though, there's apartments right there.
There's no, there's still, yeah, no.
Oh, right there, I see, yeah.
There, there's an, there's an apartment on the corner, but there's also a driveway in the back, behind, up there, back there, right there, that's that's parking right there.
Usually, it's it's two more, it's like.
Yes. Right, there's a.
Yes.
So that's parking right there, so the motorcycles can.
Next to it.
That's where the motorcycles often park.
Yeah.
Right.
Are you talking about, like this?
But you live around.
Well, no, those are usually.
Talking about right here.
Yeah, that's why.
There's a green flag light right there.
Okay, okay, because that is private property connected to this person, but.
Right, I'm saying they have parking, but they're using the street to park there.
Yeah.
Right, as you turn.
We'll have to review to see if the local law prohibits parking there, which I don't think it does, and then we'll have to decide if we wanna pursue that with a local law, and all the glories that will come out of that change.
Yeah, maybe I'm, maybe Bernie knows, I mean, there are a certain distance from an intersection, you're not supposed to park anyway.
That's hard.
Fifty.
It's like fifteen feet, it's.
It's really.
Fifteen feet is not very, not very long, so, you know, it's always been problem downtown businesses, obviously, you don't wanna disallow parking to, you know. Right.
Yes.
To see how much it made.
Yes.
Right, but you come around that corner, eat, not just for a fire, for an emergency vehicle, you come around that corner and there's no nowhere to go, there's only room for one, one car to ride.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Just two roads. They're right there at the.
So you're. So you're right there, perfect example, right there, go back to that, go back to that, yeah.
You're saying like the school bus.
They're right there.
Yeah, the school buses struggle.
Yeah.
What's that sign?
Yeah.
That sign is no parking here to corners, at this corner or the other corner?
No, it's.
It's probably.
That.
That corner.
Right where that is.
So this is actually legally parked?
Yes.
Alright, well, we'll have to review that as well.
Yeah, I think.
I think it wouldn't hard to just ask them, to pause and tell them the fire trucks.
Oh, sure.
No, I don't think we wanna ask, I think we need to make it a law, because that way.
No, no, we will, we can tell, we're making the law, but in the meantime.
Right.
Do both, do both.
Yeah.
In the meantime, please, if you can, call someone else, because fire trucks need to get.
So that.
Yep. Alright, um.
Sometimes people just don't come here.
Thanks Kenny, Kenny, we're gonna send you to ask the people.
I don't think so, not gonna.
I'm just kidding, alright, uh sewer department report, Kenny, Anthony, you wanna, no?
Um, no, just, everything's going good, I've started getting calls, um from contractors, you know, there, I guess the bids well, the UV stuff, so I've been getting a few calls, I've been contacting with around the floors a few times.
Yep.
Um, you know, we had some questions here and there, um but yeah, there's a couple people that'll come down, so I assume we're gonna get a few bids.
That's good, that's good.
Um, Rob?
Yeah.
I don't see that resolution to put that out to bed, but.
Uh, that is because Elena.
I'm sorry, that's the, I'm sorry, that's for the water plant, I'll state it now, I don't see that.
That's the other, yeah, yeah.
I don't see that.
Uh.
It's not on the agenda, but it's supposed to be a motion.
Yeah, I, I don't know what agenda I sent to you guys, I'm a mess, apparently.
Resolution for the.
Uh, it was supposed to be.
I see, I see, see you on, I reached out to Tad, was it Tad, was his name, yeah, and I asked, I said usually when, before we go out to bed, we just do a motion to go out to bed, and then we do a resolution for it.
Yep, you're right.
And he said it was fine, he's doing it that way, but.
Uh, I have the document, I forgot something on our new business, it's just a motion to authorize going out for bid for the dehumidification project, so just remind me when we get there.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, but I'll, yeah, I'll bring that up, my apologies, I had that on the agenda, I had it as a resolution, I probably took that whole thing out instead of just changing it to a motion. Alright, um.
I'll make the motion to accept the sewer, sewer report.
Sewer report, uh need a second to accept the sewer report, thank you Brett, uh any further questions, discussions, all in favor, approval, aye, pose your abstentions, Kerry's, uh water department reports. The only thing I wanted to highlight was that it sounds like the balance tank installation is gonna be in January.
Yeah, January sixth.
Which, okay, cool, um they did have a couple notes on here, and one of the things that they had asked about, which I wanted to bring up, was, um possibly finding ways to empower residents to do the lead tests, it's a thirty dollar cost, we don't have the ability to do and and get the tests here done, um but we have someone who will do it for thirty dollars each, um options we could do is, and I I have to also ask with Denise, because I don't wanna give you guys heart attacks about the bill, the billing system, but I know the other municipalities have said, if you provide the test results to the village, um we will give you that credit on your next water sewer bill, I don't know if that's something that is possible in our system. Um, another option is to do a fifty, a split fifteen and fifteen, or we just like would like give them a check if they produce the thing, that's probably the weirdest one. I like the discount one myself, and I think that would encourage people to not only get the test results, but to give them to us, so that we could update our uh inventory line. So trustees, you have thoughts on that as an idea?
I like the reimbursement for the results, like, and then we can document and hopefully get funding to replace.
Okay. We'll have to ask the water billing folks how we would build that in, it can't be the first time that has been brought to their attention, so I'm sure there's a way to do it.
Okay. So worst case scenario, you're talking thirty dollars for a a a parcel, right, a resident, so we have approximately twelve hundred.
Yes.
Yeah.
If everybody.
If everybody did it, we're looking at thirty six thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yep. Which is a significant, you know, change, but it also does go to a good thing that you have.
But. Well, no.
I think they're only gonna get four or five hundred, I think it's our responsibility to have that information, I'm fine with.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
Me too, well, especially seeing that.
Especially when they don't know when there's an extra thirty bucks in their bill, they want a bit, otherwise.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but, and we're also getting a million dollars, you know, from the the, so, which is water related, so it should be, the residents shouldn't take it on the chin for that.
Yeah.
More than one.
That would certainly make make sense.
Yes, what they said.
It's in our interest, I reckon, everybody would do it.
Yes.
Well, yeah, the data.
Alright, so I will try to have either some sort of resolution or something that would codify that next month,
That's it.
or in February, that'll give us time to talk to the business, uh folks to do the water billing and figure out how to make that happen, and the first time that that would be available would basically be like the March bill, which I don't know if people will be jumping that soon at it, but.
Well, it's April, isn't it?
Or April bill, and then um more likely it would be more in the August bill, where they would be able to get it, so, but I'm glad to know you guys like that, and we'll we'll pursue that.
April bill, right.
Would we put a cap on when it has to be done by?
We could certainly offer it for like twenty twenty five, sure.
Yeah, I think it should, cuz like.
I would defer to Jim and Josh on that, where they would wanna see it done by.
Cuz they're not doing it, right?
No, they won't do it, but they'll get the data, they'll file it, and then they'll update their enormous inventory, which takes Excel like thirty minutes to load, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, doing that is all good, and I've talked with Jim and Josh, I talked to him today, it still doesn't, it's, I mean, it it it's gonna test for lead, and they're gonna say, yes, you have lead, or no, you don't, we still don't know where the lead's coming from, even if we get that test, so.
Yes.
Whether it's coming from our gooseneck, or from, you know, from their shut off end of the house, where it then I believe falls on their responsibility, the homeowner's responsibility.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I mean, so we're still gonna have to, it's.
And that's, that's where they're looking for funding for pursuing this further.
Yeah, cuz, you know, we're still gonna have to dig, one one, you know, the day wrecking the street all the way back to see it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, this will be like something that.
It gives, it it gives people an idea.
We've just gotta deal with for decades, yeah.
Right, it's not secure, I mean, that's just gonna make them aware that they have lead.
Right.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's gonna, you know.
Unless, of course, the EPA blows up that requirement, so.
It's gonna send people.
But it'll be a cop.
That's our good news, so we still have an EPA.
Uh, anyway, don't wanna go there, uh alright, any other questions on the water report, Megan, anything else you wanna highlight?
So. The van, I know the topic of replacing vehicles is not fun, but just so we're aware, um it's it's bad, it's not getting any better, so, um Jim is gonna get some prices for us
Good.
to look at replacement, I know we can't do new, so we're gonna look and see what we can do.
Good.
Upstate Auto, looks like they get a lot of them.
Yeah.
I actually, mine was down there the other day, they have a lot of trucks, I mean, again, we'd have to check them out, cuz I don't, I don't know how, but they have a lot of trucks that will fit their need down there, a lot of them.
Yep.
Sure.
Good.
Yes.
Um.
And they're fairly inexpensive.
Yeah.
They're also looking for a storage shed, just for, I know, additional storage, um they're gonna be getting pricing for that, so that's something that we'll probably be looking at getting,
Okay. Um, when the dehumidification unit comes in, which I'm super excited for, um there is gonna be extra storage. Pretty rough.
And that is going out for bid.
Since we're talking dehumidification, and my apologies for not having it on the um uh on the agenda, I gotta find the um document we got from uh Delaware Engineering, so just a quick background on this, Delaware Engineering, uh we um paid them to come up with the design specs and bid specs for this, they are ready to advertise uh this, and this is the schedule that they're set, uh they'll basically be opened, uh I think, on on January sixteenth, um a pre-bid conference is gonna be scheduled on Tuesday, January seventh, um and all these documents are available right here, um so this is going to be advertised, I think as soon as Friday, I think by Friday we're doing this.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we can get it in this week, but most likely next Friday.
Okay. It's important that we hit the Times Union on this one as well, um and and probably also Bennington Banners, because it's close to us. Um, this is one where I would wanna see us spending a little more money to get out there than just our our normal local papers.
Yeah.
Um, so basically, we just need a motion to uh authorize the advertisement for bids, correct? For the water treatment plant dehumidification objects, alright, so Megan has moved, Doug has seconded further discussion, all in favor, aye?
Yes, yes. Aye.
Aye.
Pose your abstentions, alright, Kerry's good.
Something we should probably add, I I believe it could be quite pricey, knowing that we're not gonna get the settlement money, there probably is gonna need to be a bond resolution at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Buying anticipation, no?
Revenue anticipation, no?
Revenue, yeah.
Revenue anticipation, and both.
Well. Depending on what funds you're gonna plan on using.
Yes.
To fund projects.
Yes, because we'll have to approve the project, and there will be funding, I don't know when the funding will actually start becoming due, cuz there's a lot of time that will go in before construction, I mean, they're gonna have to make whatever it is and so on, but yeah, we have to look at that for next time as well. Paying for that, cuz that's gonna be, we're expecting about a hundred thousand dollars or more for the appropriate humidification system, probably more, because that was close to what um was done in the GAC building when the companies had to redo that.
They mentioned to me around one sixty.
Yeah, that that seems more likely, alright, um, real fast on, since we've been through reports minutes, um you guys got the November thirteen regular meeting minutes, was there anything that needed to be changed or addressed? Alright, Doug and Bobby has seconded it, um to approve the November thirteen minutes, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Did I miss my chance to say anything?
Aye? Pose your obsession, no, that's next, alright, Kerry's, trustee committee reports, trustee alter, you.
There you go, Dan.
There you go.
Yeah, I just wanna tell you guys that I have two new awesome heroes.
Okay.
One is Kenny, because he called me one day and he says, bucket load is broken, and we don't know if we're gonna get the Christmas stuff up on the poles, let's go it into the woods. And then he did, he got it, he made it happen, so, thank you, it was.
By the way, Kenny, I.
And it looks great, it looks, it's so.
Drove home from Thanksgiving, and we came into the village at nighttime, and it was all lit up and gorgeous, just beautiful, it was a really nice moment, I really loved it.
Isn't that, that was, yeah, it was perfect, it was perfect.
Yep.
Yep, and um and Aaron did a great job on the um busy boat, he used the. Yup, yup, and um and Aaron did a great job on the um busy boat, he used the.
Good, good.
Reed sea had made for my window a year ago and so he, yeah, that looks really cool, and my other, my only big hero.
Good. Great.
Is Doug, because.
They got it.
So I have a chance for station stuff, because I.
Absolutely, thank you Doug.
Can do it, and.
Anything else, Doug?
No, no, but.
Thank you, trustee Hanselman, anything? Alright, trustee sour.
Street lights.
Street lights.
Yeah, so National Grid came in and changed eighteen, um. I went out with someone last night, we identified twenty nine lights.
Wait, they replaced the ones that have been out for a while, bulbs?
Some of them.
Eighteen eighteen of them, yeah, we had, we have twenty nine lights.
Oh, my gosh, be still my heart, still.
And and six of them are in intersections, some of them are pretty bad, like Parsons and and High Street and um mechanic and Rivers Road.
Yeah. As of last night. First street is like pitch dark though, first street's terrible.
I mean, it's, there's like six of them out on River Road, it's bad, and night light tonight is dangerous.
Yup.
So, um, I know John was going to the portal and putting these in, we numbered them, we labeled them, so you actually could go and see, you'll see a sticky on them.
Yeah.
If they're not working, so we know it's not working, but I think we really, I don't, I don't think it's acceptable, but, uh.
If you can email me that list, Doug, um.
Me too, cause I have a.
Or give it to me, because um I have the number.
I emailed it today.
Oh, okay, alright, I have the eight I have the eight hundred number for National Grid too, and I I that's, I'll call them as well.
Throw around your title as deputy mayor, they they do respond better to that, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, Doug?
No, I don't.
Thank you, uh, Dan's not here, Megan?
Oh, no, I covered everything, I just wanted to bring up the Willard thing too, so.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, old business, I'm just leaving this here, but I don't think we need to do anything on the capital products party list, especially now that we know three M money is coming way later. Um, I did wanna touch base quickly on this, when the town assessor came last meeting and asked us to consider a local law, um. We're delaying for two reasons, one, Elena is gonna work with Tiffany on the local law, cause this is kind of a little bit different than what you've done before. But Tiffany is going to look at the number that will be set that will allow this um senior exemption to kick in, because right now, as the number stands. Two people qualify, that's it, so she's gonna look at what numbers could be set and how many people would qualify and get that information for us. So that when we decide to set this as a local law, a proper date that hasn't been changed in two thousand two, we'll have more data on, you know, what this means.
Cause it's income driven, right?
Oh, I did, I'm sorry, yeah, yes, yes, Bobby, I skipped you by accident, do you have anything?
Income, right. That's all right, yeah, I know you did. No, that's fine, I only I was gonna bring up was the National Grid about getting to make sure that, no.
Okay. Sorry about that, thank you.
No, no, it's fine.
Thank you. He's like, that's fine, but your tires are gonna be popped when you leave the building, yeah, okay, so I just wanna tell you that's coming, we're planning to have that information to you guys before the January meeting. So we can kind of make our decision on what we wanna put in the local law, it has to go through local law, so ideally, we introduce it in January, public hearing in February, and we can prove it in February in time. For April, which is I think what she'd ask for. Okay, great, uh, new business items, we've already talked through the DPW truck, so that is good, we get to see all the glorious pictures again, we can see Kenny's beautiful photography. Alright, CRRB, uh, we do have a member who is uh stepping down off the board, so uh sadly, I know she's been great and she has a good mind for it. Um, but also, it just, she's a lot of situations she hasn't been able to really contribute with, um, because of nature of situation, so. Uh, regretfully, I'm looking for a motion to accept resignation of Trish Blumer from the CRRB, thank you Doug and thank you Bobby, second.
Second.
She's still.
Uh, further discussion, thank you for all of her help, uh, especially in getting things off the ground, we're working with all the folks uh there, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, um, opposer abstentions, uh, carries, I do have a resolution as soon as I find it. Uh, that will appoint uh Don McCabe as the member to fill that, now, this was a special situation I had to go do a little bit of checking on. Because he's not a village resident, but the law that established it does allow for non-residents to serve and be voting members. So I built that into this resolution, this will be appointing an individual to the civilian reviewing reform board, uh, specifically, uh, I I put the language from the local law there. Um, that states regarding members of the CRRB, voting members must be a village resident at a ti- at the time of appointment. Unless such residency requirement is waived by the village board trustees at the time of the appointment of such member based on consideration of strong connections to the village. Such as business operations and or professional social services, we know Don is exceedingly connected to the village, so.
Yes.
Now therefore be resolved by the board trustees, the village defaults in regular session to the convenience follows, one, the village uh Huzik Falls board trustees hereby appoint Don McCabe of six eighty two Pine Valley Road. Uh, to uh the village of Huzik Falls CRRB with a term to expire on December thirty one twenty twenty five, it's year terms, it was also in the local law. Um, and number two, the board trustees recognizes that Don McCabe resides outside the village and in the town of Huzik. But that due to his strong connections to the village, he should be a voting member of the CRRB and is appointed as such, so need uh someone to off the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, I need a second, Brett, thank you, further discussion, alright, it's a roll call vote, so Judy, take it away, please.
Trustee Devalter?
Yes.
Um, trustee Brett Hanselman?
Yes.
Dan Shudding?
Absent, yup.
Trustee Doug Sauer? Trustee Megan Mulberry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Robert Ryan?
Yes.
And Mayor Robert Ryan?
I'm also a yes, so that passes and I'm grateful to have him there, thank you, uh, Don, for your service.
It'll be a great, great asset.
Thank you Doug for also uh helping a lot of that happen and pushing that on, make sure that was on our radar, so thank you Doug. Alright, I have another resolution, this is related to just setting up the polling location, this is something that we're required to do each year and I figured. Let's just get it done now, um, ahead of time, let me find the resolution.
You did that.
There it is, this is a short and pretty one, what's that?
Yeah, you don't have the other resolution.
This one's not?
No, no, this one is, the other one, the next one isn't.
No. This one is another one.
The normal one, that's always a.
The third party, uh.
Okay, thank you, so this one is on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a resolution that just sets the polling location hours for the March election, we know it's on March eighteenth, uh, this is now therefore be resolved, the polling place for the twenty twenty five village election. Will be held to the village municipal building twenty four Main Street, Huzik Falls, New York, between the hours of noon and nine P M, this is just state, we have to do Brett, has offered, need a second?
Second.
Thank you, literally everybody, Megan gets it, uh, further discussion?
You are the.
Uh, it's March twenty, March eighteenth, sorry, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, this is something that's set by state law every year.
March.
Yeah, eighteen.
Yeah.
Um. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, trustee Devalter?
Yes.
Trustee Brett Hanselman?
Yes.
Trustee Dan Shudding, absent, trustee Doug Sauer?
Yes.
Trustee Megan Mulberry?
Yes.
Mayor Robert Allen?
I'm a yes.
Deputy Mayor Robert Ryan?
Yes.
Alright, and apparently I forgot to put this on the uh agenda or send it out, this is the standard fair resolution for payment of expenses for environmental. And um legal work as it pertains to the um new water sources, it's paid out of the company's escrow account, this is literally the fourteenth one of these, so I'm just gonna kind of skip to the end. Uh, now therefore be resolved, this board trustees has hereby authorized the payment of invoices from Sterling Environmental, in the amount of one thousand three hundred seventy nine sixty five, and Gilchrist Tingley, in the amount of one thousand three hundred fifty seven. Uh, to be paid from the escrow account funded by Saint Covina Honeywell, from the agreement of uh in twenty twenty three, please don't, thank you, uh, Doug, thank you Brett for the second. Further discussion, standard fare for us fourteenth time, roll call vote?
Aye, um, trustee Dan Shudding, absent, trustee Brett Hanselman?
Yes.
Trustee Deb Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Megan Mulberry?
Yes.
Trustee Doug Sauer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Robert Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Robert Allen?
I'm a yes, um, I do have the Urswama service agreement, which we don't have to act on right now, especially with the questions we have, but they did send it to us. This is kind of the standard fare, um, agreement that we normally do, which basically just extends it a year. Um, I just got this to you guys, so we can certainly table this and just do it next meeting, but this is what we just do regularly every year. Um, Doug, I'm very content to have you look this over and give your thoughts on it or use it to further discuss all the weird things that you're finding out.
Like we don't have a contract.
Yeah. So, do you want us to move on this, uh, one year agreement or table it?
I would, I would say can we table it?
Let's table it until uh.
No, actually.
January, okay, do we need a motion table?
Yes.
Uh.
I move.
Thank you Doug.
Second.
Thank you, uh, everybody will give it to Megan, cause she's louder, um, all in favor of table on this till the next meeting? Aye, poser abstentions, carries, I think that's all I have for the agenda, did you guys have anything else you wanted to bring up?
Aye.
Alright, hearing none, um, the final thing will be uh a motion. Um, to enter executive session to discuss proposed current or pending litigation and potential future hiring decisions, no business to be conducted at the end of executive session. Brett, are you offering that motion?
I'm sure.
Need a second, Megan, all in favor? Aye, poser abstentions, alright, carries, the meeting is officially over, uh, look at this, look at this, seven forty one students coming up, any of us can sign off.